Good evening. We'll call to order the regular board meeting, or yes, regular board meeting for September 10th of 2024. Mr. Hulsey is going to bring our invocation and pledge tonight.
All right, let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day and for your many words of blessings. We just ask you to continue to bless the gods in all that we do, and please give us the courage to keep our students and staff and teachers and parents safe and warm. For all these things, we ask your heavenly name.
Amen. For the blessings to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hulsey. And we have Ms. Dozier coming to the podium for our spotlight.
Good evening. How are y'all doing?
Good evening.
Tonight, we have Officer Michael Harper, our dedicated SRO at Golden Isles Elementary, who has recently added another feather to his cap by becoming a published author. His children's book, Big Boot and the Dream, is a charming tale that follows the adventures of Big Boot, a young character with big dreams and an even bigger heart. In this story, Big Boot navigates various challenges, learning invaluable life lessons about friendship, perseverance, and the importance of following one's goals. Officer Harper's book not only entertains, but also imparts essential values that resonate with readers of all ages. We are proud to have him as part of our community, and we celebrate his achievement in bringing Big Boot in the Dream to life. Please join me in welcoming Officer Michael Harper to share a few words about his inspiring journey.
Thank you, thank you. Well, this book has been a huge passion of mine. It all started with my mother. She was very artistic, and where it really originated from, we would sneak and draw on the wall. So you know, she didn't allow that. But instead of really punishing us for it, she said, you had one wall you could draw on, and that's how we started drawing, me and my brothers. But as time went on, my mom was the kind of person that would talk about her childhood growing up, and so that rolled back onto me. And as I got older and I began to have kids, and all the things that I went through and peer pressure and stuff like that, it became like a focal point for me to write it down. And when I started watching my kids as they started growing, and they were funny, because brothers and sisters, you know, you know how they can get. And so that became another inspiration for myself. So with that being said, I kind of was putting pieces together as I was going through this particular journey. My mom, it falls under the umbrella of the cornbread kids, which is spelled with a K. But that's because my mom would cook this kind of tea cake. I'm from Tennessee, so they call it a tea cake, right? So she would make it, and a lot of the neighborhood kids would come by and they were like, you know, Mama Frances is making tea cake. Can we get some? So as I'm going through this, and then as I travel, because I traveled a lot, and my career has took me into a lot of places, you know, there was a police officer came out and I was on SWAT, been to Afghanistan, Iraq, and I was in Russia. And my last two hours over in Colombia for almost 12 years. So for me, you know, just meeting different people and different children, and just the inspiration in different cultures, it caused me to kind of put a character, a lot of characters together at a child level, sort of speak children, to inspire kids on how to act, you know, obstacles they may run across, you know. And as being a cop in the street, I ran across a lot of stuff, and you know, working in the schools, you know. So that's been, that was my total inspiration, was really my mom and watching my kids grow, you know, and a lot of my travels. So that's what had got me inspired. And I'm working on book two and three now. I'm an author illustrator. I've drawn over 236 characters, so it's, I have spinoffs. So it's huge, you know, it's huge. So I'm always, you know, thinking and drawing, and so it's been a process. So it's really inspirational for me, you know, when I'm able to take a thought and I'm able to take my writing and put it into something that's tangible, and where you can literally see it. And when I read it at Golden Isles, the kids are already asking, when's book two coming up? You know, so I read, and they'll hunt me down, Officer Harper, can you read the book? Can you read the book? So that's been, that's been pure joy for me. So that's why I'm here.
And next up, we have Mrs. Wanda Shu, who's here to introduce this year's Teachers of the Year.
Good evening.
I want to thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight to introduce our 2024, 2025 Teachers of the Year. These outstanding educators have been selected by their colleagues because they stand out as exceptional, dedicated, knowledgeable, and highly skilled professionals. Teacher of the Year is one of the highest honors that can be bestowed upon teachers in our profession. Tonight, we recognize and appreciate the impact each of these educators has on students, and applaud their dedication and commitment to making a difference for the students of Glen County. While we recognize each of them tonight, we will celebrate them more formally on October 10th at our annual Teacher of the Year celebration. Tonight, as I introduce each teacher, I would like to ask each of you to stand where you are and be recognized. Brunswick High, Jasmine Hubbard. And I don't believe Jasmine could be with us tonight. Glen Academy, Liz Perez. Glen Middle School, I'm sorry, Glen Academy. Liz, Glen Academy, sorry. Glen Middle School, Laura Dempsey. Jane Macon, Michael Gallion. Needwood Middle School, Jared Gainis. Rizley Middle School, Gabrielle Slay. Altama Elementary, Erica Ellison. Burrows-Mallett, Erica Carver, and I don't think Erica is with us tonight. Glendale Elementary, Janee Bernie. Golden Isles, Doug Marshall. Goodyear Elementary, Jasmine Quarterman. Greer Elementary, Carla Kate. Oglethorpe Point, Tracy Smith. St. Simon's Elementary, Paige Tiller. Satilla Marsh Elementary, Pepe Morris. Sterling Elementary, Caitlin Bourbon. Faces, Leaps and Bounds, Miranda Rains. Alternative Programs, Dr. Courtney Miller. Golden Isles College and Career Academy, Laura Burson. Georgia Learning Resources Systems, Special Ed Teacher of the Year, Lynn Trulick. I present to you the 2024, 2025 Teachers of the Year.
I want to take just a moment to say thank you for taking time to come and be with us tonight and recognize you. You know, y'all are with our children day in and day out, and we appreciate all that you put into your work and all the dedication that you show to those children and the differences that you make for them. And thank you, Officer, also for impacting the children at Golden Isles Elementary the way you do, and showing them what you can do when you have a dream. And we appreciate you all. Thank you. Okay. We will, the next item on the agenda is Citizens Address the Board. We did not have anyone sign the list today, so we'll move on to the safety protocol presentation by Ms. Haywood and Chief Davis.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to give some updates with regard to safety, and we'll turn it over to Chief Davis to start.
Good afternoon, everybody. They said it takes a village, and it does take a village. I would like to first thank Chief Sheriff John, I mean, I'm sorry, Sheriff John, and Chief Abner, Chief Jones. I'd like to thank the GBI agents, also the FBI agents. That's our village that helps us on a day-to-day basis when it comes to different things that's going on in our school. They help us protect the schools, so I would like to give them thanks. Also, law enforcement presence. There's an officer at every school, at every school. Some schools have more than one officer, some of them have three officers, some of them have two officers. All our officers are well-trained and active shooter trained. We did some active shooter training this summer, we did some last year, and as we speak now, they are doing some training at another location right now, some more training that we definitely need. All officers, they walk the schools, they walk the interior, they walk the exterior, they make sure everything is good, they monitor their cameras on a daily basis. All the schools have cameras on the inside, and they have cameras on the outside. We also have a full-time dispatcher. She monitors all those cameras every single day. So if I have an officer out walking the campus and she sees something suspicious, she's checking and letting them know what is going on. And they may give her a call and say, hey, what's going on in such and such area, even during a football game or basketball game. She's monitored those cameras at all times to let us know anything that might be happening. There's also safety protocols that every school has to go through every year. They do security drills on a monthly basis to make sure they are doing things the right way, so if anything was to happen in the school system, they are more than prepared. Threat assessments. If, I'm using these words, if at any time we have a student that make a threat in school, would I call it a terroristic threat? If they threaten to shoot up the school, if they threaten to shoot a student, if they threaten to shoot a teacher, principal, they will get charged with a felony charge for terrorist threats. If they're juvenile, they will go through juvenile court. If they 17 or older, they will go through Superior Court because it is a felony charge. There will be times where officers will have to go out to the residence and do a threat assessment, because if they make a threat, we would have to go out to their residence to see if that child has the capability of getting a weapon, to make sure that the weapons are any safe, and they can't just easily get to that weapon. That way, we go out, talk with the parents, to see if any weapons are in the house, and if there are weapons in the house, where are they? Do y'all have them secure, in a safe place? We also have anonymous reporting tools, which is the Stopit app. So if there's any time a student needs to report anything, and they don't, their information not there, they can always get on that Stopit app, which is an app they put on their phone, and they can send whatever they need to send to keep their names out of it. All buildings have a control entry where you got different layers, where you can't just walk into a school. You got to get buzzed in, and then there's another layer that you have to come through instead of just being able to walk through a school. All the doors are locked at all times, and also we use what you call sentijigs. You may have heard, because of the shooting that took place last week in Apalachee, they also use the same system, sentijigs. Anytime something happens in that school, each staff member should have that card on them. They can push that card. So many pushes, it's going to allow, to let us know what's going on. If you push it too many times, it's going to lock that school down. And the good thing about that is, when they push that button, it alerts us. It alerts all law enforcement to let us know we need to start going in that direction, that there's probably an issue going on over there. And that's the other good thing about my dispatcher, she's on it as well, because she's pulling up the cameras to see what's going on, and she can call us immediately, let us know if there's somebody running through the campus or if there's an issue in the campus at any time. Okay? I'll turn it over to Ms. Haywood.
Just a moment ago, Chief was talking about threats and intimidation, and we wanted to just take a moment to really remind our, our community that we've got two things that are happening. You've got criminal side, which Chief has just addressed, but you also have the Student Code of Conduct, which deals with the administrative side of how we operate in schools. And the Student Code of Conduct is very clear as it relates to threats and intimidation. And I want to take a moment just to read the actual definition, the state definition of threats and intimidation, as it is written in our Student Code of Conduct that was approved by you all, code, our state board, JCDAs, page 21. And it says, "Any threat through written or verbal language or act which creates a fear of harm and/or conveys a serious expression of intent to harm or violence without displaying a weapon and without subjecting the victim to actual physical attack, which includes physical, verbal, or electronic threats, but not limited to bomb threats or pulling the fire alarm." Does not say anything about joking. Doesn't say anything about using a weapon. It clearly says any threat, and it talks about whether it is written, whether it is verbal. It also talks about an expression of intent to harm. An expression can be using your fingers to show an expression as if you're using a weapon. Any threat that is made toward another student, toward a staff member, toward anyone that creates a fear of harm falls into this category and will not be tolerated in the Glen County school system. It is a violation of the Student Code of Conduct, and there are consequences. Those consequences range from short-term suspension to long-term suspension, and pending on the preponderance of evidence that is used, could also be an expulsion. It will not be tolerated in the Glen County school system. We want to ensure the safety of all of our students, all of our staff. We want to make sure that people are safe, and that our kids can learn in an environment where they feel secure, and they feel safe, and our staff is safe.
Thank y'all for that information, reviewing it. I know it's very important, given what we see in these environments and schools across our state and country. So I appreciate y'all making it very clear how we handle threats in our system and what we're doing to make sure that our schools are safe places for our children.
Yes.
I want to add two things. The cameras that we're putting in the classroom now are supposed to work with sentijigs. They're working on a way that when the teacher pushes that button, it automatically shows what's going on in that classroom. So we're trying to get that to work, and I think that would be something that could help us a lot. But I also want each of you to remember that everyone wants the maximum penalty for a student when they threaten someone, until it's your child, until it's someone you know. And so that's something we deal with on a daily basis, is folks telling us, oh, my kid was playing, my kid didn't mean that. But we cannot, we cannot just let that slide under the rug. We have to deal with it, and we do.
And just the environment we're in, and I believe y'all have done a great job since I've been on the board as far as dealing with threats. It's not just because of the situation we have now, but playing off of that, I mean, it seems like they're getting younger and younger, so now you're getting them in elementary. And I think I was listening to the news today, and they mentioned a sixth grader, or a six-year-old that made a threat that's being charged with a felony, or they're running through the same system. So how are we handling it? I mean, I understand that you've got kids being kids, and they may say stuff, and have we been tracking, like, is there a way that you're tracking these kids if they do make a threat and they're a kindergartner, and it's like, oh, they were, you know, you got to deal with it individually, I think.
So there's things that we can say and we can't say here today, and we talked about some of the things we do.
Right.
But we try to look at the age, but we do document, and we do have a way of keeping up with who says things and who does things over time.
Right. My thoughts were just saying, okay, what happens in kindergarten, then first grade, and also the second grade, it's like, okay, we know something's off with this kid here, so there's a pattern. At that point, does it escalate, or does that kindergarten, kindergartner say something and have the ability to get a weapon and bring a script? You know, that's what you always got to worry about, I guess, in the back of your head, is if we didn't do this. But I'm not saying you're not, I'm just saying, how are we addressing it? I know there's certain things you probably can't.
Terry, you want to talk about the young kids?
Yeah, so in the state of Georgia, there is a law that says that you cannot suspend a child that is kindergarten through third grade for longer than five days at a time without having an MTSS intervention process in place for that child. And so we do that regardless in elementary school. That's always our first step. Of course, we're reaching out to our counselors to work with children that say disturbing things like this. But we also consider the age, we consider the history, the behavioral history of the But we also have those two sides. We have a law enforcement side, even as young as five years old. You know, five, six, seven years old, we've seen it. There's, in fact, our juvenile court judge has really been supportive of us providing intervention, the sooner the better, especially for students who are experiencing trouble, obviously, if they're saying these things in school. So, you know, the sooner the court system can get involved and offer help and wraparound services to a family, sometimes we can head off some of these things when they're young. And so that's what we're hoping to do in elementary school. However, you know, just following up on what Ms. Haywood said and what Dr. Spence, and Chief Davis said, we don't tolerate it in elementary school either. And so, you know, there are consequences, even though we're trying to help you and we're providing interventions for you, and we're considering your age, and we're considering the severity of the threat, or was it a hand motion, was it a gesture, was it words? We consider all that, but at the same time, we're holding them accountable as well.
Sanich, you want to talk a little bit about preponderance of evidence that we have versus what?
Yes, so preponderance of evidence, essentially, like the scales of justice, and when they're tipped just a little bit, meaning that a reasonable person, based on what has happened, a reasonable person would say that this, the probability that this happened is that this happened. And so using the facts, who, what, where, when. Why usually is not necessarily a part of it. Can why play into it? Yes, but why can be relative. All of our investigations are based on facts, not on what we think, not on what we feel, but on the facts of what has happened.
And we, as administrators, use the preponderance of evidence.
Correct. Which is different from what law enforcement uses. What is y'all standard of, y'all standard is reasonable?
It is reasonable probable cause.
Yeah, probable cause.
Yes.
So it is a different standard, and ours is a little lower. So, right. Thank you. Any other questions for us?
Do y'all have, just a simple question, do y'all have mobile access to the cameras? If you're driving, you have an Apple phone for the access to cameras?
Not the mobile, no. We have, I have it on the laptop, but not the phone, no.
No, I don't, I don't, I will have to check with Bob. I don't, I know we don't right now.
So Mr. Benson?
Check on that, because when I was managing, you know, multiple companies, I mean, I could look at, I could pull it up on my phone and look at, you know, a hotel or a business.
So sentijigs. So Mr. Benson, I was, he was just on the phone with sentijigs 30 minutes before this meeting, and that's, there's the app on sentijigs, that's the next step there is that whenever the sentijig alert is pushed, it instantly goes to the, to the phone of who, who we allow access to. And it shows the camera in that location.
But I guess, I mean, if she's on his way, not to use your cell phone in your car, but if he's on his way, can he pull up the cameras if we have an active threat? You know, we can't get to a computer, we don't want to be sitting in the parking lot going, how do you nice look at the camera?
We know where the location is, but at this point in time, we don't have that.
Every company has an app that, you know, just, we need to have a mobile access to it again.
So we're in the process.
I'm not saying everybody, but if you and Chief and maybe the one SRO at the school or the principal or whatever, should be able to look at their cameras from home, lying in bed on the phone. It should be that simple, especially if you have something going on and you're not there. But if y'all will check on that, I'd appreciate it.
I'm sure sentijigs could give it to us for free.
If they don't, we can find out.
You guys have been very, you guys have been very good about giving us anything we needed for safety. You've never said no to me, so thank you for that.
If they try to charge for it, then we can find out.
They will, they will.
Well, I like, I like the fact that the line's been drawn, that any threat's going to be, have punishment associated with it. And, you know, you can't holler out fire in a movie theater, you can't holler out bomb in an airport. You can't make threats in a school. It's just, you can't do that. And I want the public to know, and parents to know, that we are dealing with this on a daily basis, and these acts will not be tolerated.
Any other questions for us, guys?
All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda is to approve tonight's agenda as presented. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Hello.
Second, motion by Dr. Yergin, and a second by Ms. Gibbons to approve tonight's agenda. Does anybody want to discuss? We're good to vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, unanimous? As far as consent agenda items, we have number eight, approval of the August 2024 meeting minutes. We had six meetings in August, they're all covered. Number nine, A, personnel, excuse me, number nine, B, field trips. Nine, C, one, the GUD report. Nine, D, one, approval of the July 2024 financials. Nine, D, two, approval of the fiscal year '25 CTA Perkins grant. Nine, D, three, approval of the 21st Century grants. Nine, D, four, approval of the Brunswick High School Football Fieldhouse Owner Architect Agreement. Nine, D, five, approval of the SRO vehicle. And nine, E, all of these items were discussed in our work session last Thursday, and regarding nine, E, we have a revised policy JR for student records that we've tabled to the October meeting. So we'll add that to the consent agenda for nothing as far as the policy committee goes this meeting. Does anyone have any additions or deletions to the consent agenda? Any discussions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items listed. Motion by Ms. Gibbons.
I'll say.
A second by Mr. Edgy. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda items, it's unanimous. All right. I don't believe we have any executive, executive session items, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I'll say.
Motion by Mr. Halsey very quickly, and a second by Mr. Edgy. All those in favor of adjourning to tonight's meeting, it's unanimous at 6:28.